Okay, good evening and welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for January 4th, 2016. Happy New Year to everybody. Before we get started, I'd like to read a statement before the Board. During the past couple of weeks, I'm fortunate to have enjoyed the holidays with family, remembering loved ones gone, and discussing with my wife Emily what the future may hold. This year concludes my fifth term as a member of the Board of Selectmen. In addition to dealing with the myriad of decisions that affect our town, several not necessarily easy, I've also had the opportunity to work with many wonderful and dedicated people on some very special projects. The Ruth Ann Bleekney Senior Center, which cleaned up a contaminated site and spurred economic revitalization in that section of town, provides a vibrant, active, and state-of-the-art facility to serve our senior citizens. The athletic field complex at Milford High School has turned a depressing and decrepit football field into a college campus quality athletic complex for all members of the community to utilize and enjoy. And most currently, the Armory renovation project will restore a key part of our history. It will give the young people of Milford a remarkable place to gather at the J.D. Antonio Youth Center and, at the same time, maintain a strong presence in the Main Street area. At a certain point, an individual is satisfied with his or her accomplishment in whatever endeavor and is ready to step aside. Emily and I concluded that I have not reached that point. Milford is on the cusp of an economic and cultural change. One need look no further than the intersection of Route 16 and 140 to see the future. The Milford Regional Medical Center and Dana Faber affiliate, the hub of medical services for southern central Massachusetts, will continue to bring jobs and subsidiary business to the area. This growth will require decisions to be made by town leaders on infrastructure, real estate, businesses, and key services such as public transportation. These decisions should be made based upon what is good for the town of Milford, and all of these decisions affect our tax dollars. Over the past 15 years, I have worked hard to research all matters and make responsible decisions that are in the best interest of the town as a whole. During this very crucial period in our history, I believe the diversity of educated opinion I bring to this Board is needed more than ever. That is why I will be a candidate for reelection to the Board of Selectmen this April. Thank you for your indulgence, and now we'll get on with the regular meeting. First item that we have is a signing of the warrant.
Moved seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Approval of meeting minutes, December 14th, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a suggestion, a recommendation, on item number nine. Said Mr. Buckley requested Town Administrator Volani notify department heads that are under the Selectmen's jurisdiction that request a capital approval of items go through the Town Administrator. I'd actually said that the Town Administrator and Director of Finance, and that they're brought to the Selectmen for review before going to the Finance Committee. That's the only change. And Director of Finance would be the change.
Okay, motion made and seconded to amend number nine as stated in the minutes. On the minutes as amended, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Invitation to speak? No one here tonight. We don't have any public hearings or scheduled appointments. We'll go right to the Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Update on budgets. As we enter the second half of fiscal year, our budgets under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen are on target. I inform the Finance Committee we'll be meeting on January 13th to begin discussion of next year's budget. I do have an update on the registered marijuana dispensary. I've been informed by Michael Dundas that Milford Medicinals, Inc., the original name they were going to use, they have now changed their name to Sage Cannabis, Inc. The reason for the change is they're applying for two additional dispensary licenses in Massachusetts, and they wanted to avoid any confusion among the possible three dispensaries. They have initiated construction of their dispensary and cultivation facility center at 13 Commercial Way, and they hope to receive their certificate of occupancy by late March. At that point, the DPH will inspect the facility, and they should be planting seeds by late April with an anticipated opening of the facility by the end of the summer. I've also been informed by John Bonzel of Algonquin Gas that there'll be another open house on Monday, January 25th, 2016, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM at the Highfields Golf and Country Club at 42, excuse me, McGill Drive in Grafton. The purpose of the open house is to provide updated information to landowners, public officials, and interested stakeholders. Again, as the one that was held in Milford, there is no formal speaking program. Also, Algonquin Gas has filed its initial drafts of Resource Report 1. This report sets out the purpose and need for the Access Northeast Project, and also Resource Report 10, which discusses the various alternatives which have been evaluated to date. We will be posting on the town website the share file information so that the public may access these reports should they wish. An update on the process for the fixed bus route. I, along with Harold Rhodes, will be meeting with Ed Carr and other representatives of the MWRTA tomorrow morning to discuss the proposed fixed bus route for the town. Specifically, we'll be discussing the cost breakdown for the route as well as the actual route itself. In addition, we will tentatively be scheduling a public meeting at the Senior Center on Thursday, January 28th, 2016, at 7:00 PM to solicit the public's input on the bus route. And finally, we have received a notice that we've received a payment from FEMA this past December 22nd in the amount of $6,300 for the cost of snow removal on the library roof necessitated as a result of the January 2015 snowstorms. This represents 75% of the total cost, which is the amount we did expect. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thanks. Bill, questions?
No questions.
Will?
No.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, okay, very good. Moving on to old business, we have correspondence from the police chief recommending that we install no parking during school events on the westbound lane just west of the driveway at 18 West Fountain Street to a point 40 feet west of the driveway at 26 West Fountain Street. And this would be signage that was requested by a resident.
There isn't, at least not for me. I just have a question related to the eastbound side, and I know, I think that's prohibited.
Yes.
Yes.
So it already is prohibited.
That was done last.
Because, yeah, we had, we had some issues there with people crossing in between vehicles across the crosswalk. Okay, so in that case, I just wanted to confirm that I hadn't been by it in a little while, or taken note of it. So I'd make a motion to approve the recommendation of the police chief with regard to 26, I'm sorry, West Fountain Street.
Seconded. Yeah, I guess what had happened after the prohibition on the eastbound side, then vehicles were, of course, parking on the westbound, and there's yards there.
It makes sense.
And they were parking in people's yards and so forth, so that's why we asked the police chief to take a look at it. So it seems to make sense to do that, and it's only during the, the school events that it would be prohibited. Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous. We also have a memorandum from the police chief in relation to the Beet Street truck traffic. The Town Administrator had received an email from Mark Tuskus on 55 Beet Street, again, you know, talking about the problems that they're having with the truck traffic. So I think the chief put together a nice memo indicating some of the issues that have been looked at for a number of years, in terms of a possible truck exclusion, a no jake brakes sign, and also any concerns about the Central Street Bridge. I think the recommendation coming out of this memorandum is for the posting of a traffic warning sign on Beet Street southerly, near the corner of Main and East Main Street, and northerly, near the corner of Central Street, indicating trucks no jake brakes. Is there a motion or discussion, or what's the Board's pleasure?
I'd motion, make a motion for discussion. Seconded. So this doesn't necessarily prohibit us from looking at truck exclusion on Beet Street. As a matter of fact, there was a period of time where we had asked the trucks to seek alternate routes. This makes reference to there not being any alternate routes. Now, there was a period of time where that was significantly reduced, and truck traffic was seeking alternative routes. I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm in agreement. I think, at least my recollection of history, had vehicles going in, in other routes, and we had worked, Lou Salozzi at the time, Town Administrator, had worked cooperatively with the bottling facilities, as an example, to take trucks on different routes. And I'm not sure what happened with that. So I just want to, I just want to note that there are alternative routes, trucks were seeking alternative routes, but have since over time just, I think, gotten lazy and continue to go down Beet Street, especially the bottling facility. So I just want to remind the Board, and Will wasn't here then, that we had asked them to do that, and we had gotten a fair amount of cooperation from them, at least from the reports I had gotten from, from the neighbors on Beet Street. So I still think we have an issue. We may need to pursue this, and we may need to look at a traffic study because I'm not sure that truck exclusion is out of the question.
Yeah, well, you know, looking back, we, we have the memo from the chief of June 10th of last year, well, yes, 2015, and that was in response to, to another complaint. And there was a meeting with the bottle glass company. In an effort to be cooperative, they asked the trucking companies that come to their plant to utilize the 495 exits in Bellingham and come to them via Route 140. And if you look back, there was the email that went out on January 3rd, 2013, from Virilia Milford to, I guess, certain trucking companies with directions just in that, in that manner. Chief indicates that despite their efforts, there were several issues. First, they do not own or control the trucks. Secondly, GPS units usually direct the trucks to Route 109 or Route 85. And lastly, the town cannot require them to utilize the Bellingham exit, and the town does not have the ability to restrict them from Beet Street. And he said as for the Boston service trucks, if they are different trucks, he's unaware of any requested conditions. In any event, the town cannot restrict them from use of the public way. So that's what happened most recently in terms of the, in terms of the trucking request. In terms of actually pursuing an actual exclusion, we need to look at Mike Santora's memo of November 1995, which still, as I understand, outlines the process that would, that would have to be followed. So that is pretty much where we're at. Mike concluded, from, from his cursory analysis, it can be argued that it'll be difficult, if not impossible, to find a suitable alternated route. Approval of an exclusion in that case would be extremely doubtful because the approval has to go to the Department of Transportation. So, I mean, that's kind of where it's at. I think that, you know, we could probably ask, you know, the bottle company again to maybe reinforce their direction request, but I don't know that it's, well, I do know it's, it's nothing that can be mandated at this particular point.
Right, and we know that GPS will route you through, you know, residential neighborhoods and all kinds of crazy things, so I don't want to leave this up to GPS. I would, at a minimum, request that, and also get some information as it related, relates to the traffic analysis, to see what exactly we're dealing with, truck weights and whatnot. But that would be my suggestion. Find out what the analysis is.
To exclude the trucks?
Yes.
It says here, "To exclude commercial vehicles on any street, a very specific process must be followed. An application for a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion must be submitted to the Massachusetts Highway Department in accordance with the Standard Municipal Traffic Code, Section 10A9, a copy of which was provided to us. It requires a traffic study supported by 24-hour traffic counts to be prepared as part of the application with warrant justification and identification of a feasible alternate route. Approval is not guaranteed. At that time, the estimate to do a qualified traffic consultant was approximately $3,500."
Yeah, so I would just renew that, request to get that updated. I don't know if costs have gone up dramatically, if we're still in the same ballpark. I don't look at the $3,500 as prohibitive. I just want to understand what today's, in today's dollars, what the, what the cost would be.
Okay, so the, the request is, again, I'm sorry, for the cost?
To find out the cost associated with the analysis, right.
To pursue a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Beet Street?
For right now, it would be to understand what the, the traffic analysis cost. I'm not sure where we go with it, but that, that might be where we look.
Okay.
No, I agree with that. I think we at least should figure out what the exact traffic pattern is and what the, what the volume is. I certainly, certainly don't know. I don't find the $3,500 being cost prohibitive either. Obviously, I expect that would have, would have gone up by now. I think if nothing else, you know, Vanny's here, Scott, I've had sidebar conversations with Rick and the police chief where he's kind of given me the same information because this has been a topic of conversation, and obviously, it's been a topic of conversation for you gentlemen for quite, quite some time. But I think we either need to know what, you know, what the volume is. Is it the, just the, the trucks driving by that's, that's causing all these problems for those residents? We hear from one outspoken family, because they're the ones that are, that are staying on top of this, but the petitions and everything were signed by a huge number of the residents there. So I think, I think we need to find out if there's, even 2007 where it said that the, the culverts were, were fine, there was one large piece of granite underneath as well, that it wasn't in perfect shape, but seemed to be structurally sound. But now eight years, another eight years have gone by. So I think we at least need to, need to pay very close attention to it, and maybe if we can even have, never mind have, have Rick ask Vanny to, to do whatever it is that she needs to do to get this stuff started, like the traffic study, but also to have, you know, Vanny and Scott, and if the police chief wants to be here as well, then let's take your discretion. But I think we should just, we gotta, we gotta get some new data. We have to at least see if, you know, 10 18-wheelers are going down that road, or there's, you know, 500 going down there Monday through Friday.
Okay, well, Vanny looked at the bridge on, I guess, on December 21st, and we have those photos.
Okay. So we know the bridge is okay?
Apparently, at least on a cursory inspection, sure. That's what came in on December 21st. All right, so why don't we take it one step at a time, and let's ask the town engineer to provide us with cost estimates for a traffic study? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
At least get that, and it'd be the type of study that's needed to apply for a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion under the municipal traffic code.
And at a minimum, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a recommendation to, pursuant to the police chief's recommendation, to post, post the appropriate signs regarding no jake brakes on Beet Street.
Okay, so that was the chief's second recommendation, the no jake breaks. Okay. Yeah, when you look at these possible other roads, nothing seems to be good. He talks about North Bow Street, Jefferson Street, Central Street, E Street, Haywood Street. Okay, all right, so we've got a motion to authorize the posting of the no jake brakes signs. Seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. And also a request to the town engineer to provide us a cost estimate as a, as to a possible traffic study. Okay, the next item that we have is a memo from the Town Administrator on the Assistant Zoning Enforcement Officer. Rick, would you like to address this?
Before the Board is a revised job description. For your convenience, I redlined additions to the prior, and obviously crossed out language deleted from the prior job description. I believe now the job description more accurately depicts the true role of the zoning enforcement officer, which is to handle duties of zoning enforcement. I think the duties are now more clearly stated, as are the responsibilities required for the position. The Board indicated at a prior meeting that we wanted to make sure that the job description is suitable for the position as it now is in effect. And I believe I can look for the Board's comments and recommendations, but that is the revised job description. I also believe it's still due to the current workload is a full-time position, and I think it should maintain or remain as a full-time position. I did relook also at the salary, the hourly salary, and in looking at the salary, I would ask the Board to consider reclassifying from a grade four to a grade six hourly rated. The reasoning is that the, I believe the requirements and responsibilities of this position would now mirror the rest of the inspectors within the department. In addition, I believe the duties of the position, or at least the responsibilities, are similar to those of the health inspector position. And again, all of those positions are classified at grade six hourly. You'd be looking at a, about a $2 per hour increase in the position itself, should you look to do that. Obviously, this is for the Board's consideration. Recommend, or welcome any recommendations or revisions that you feel might be appropriate, but I think the job description now meets the criteria that we were looking for.
Okay, and you gave us a draft with the changes?
Yeah, I would clean it up, obviously.
Redlined and, and what was excluded.
There were some deletions there that the Board was looking for, I believe, yes.
Bill, questions, comments?
Yeah, a few comments. So we, I guess through this process, we've, we struck any requirements associated with enforcement of building codes?
Pretty much so, yes.
State building codes? We've also removed the requirement for the candidate to become certified?
Yes.
Because clear to us, at least from past experience, that that's not going to happen within the two years from the date of their appointment, and not through any fault of the person. It's the function of who we've hired and the background that that person has. So it's basically zoning enforcement. We've limited to zoning enforcement, so we've, I think you've hit the, the points that we've made so that we don't set up the person that we've just recently hired for failure, which was my concern. The piece of it associated with salary, you know, Rick, you and I had a conversation this afternoon. I don't get it, and I'll tell you why. Prior to posting this position, I had asked that the salary be reviewed to make sure that we could attract the best candidates. Now we're, what, three or four weeks into already having a person, and now we're saying that not only do we not post it at these salary ranges, if I were to agree to it, or if this Board were to agree to it, but I think that might have had an impact on the quality of candidates, or it potentially does. So for, now for us to review, after we've hired the person, the salary, after we've posted it and after we've advertised it, to me has a lot of questions of ethics and, you know, questionable judgment, in my opinion. I'm not necessarily in favor of this, and matter of fact, I'm very frustrated as a result of getting that memo, talking about raising the salary after having posted and advertised that position. And, Mr. Chairman, I, I think the only place to go now, and it's, it's, after multiple meetings of my communicating, my frustration, what I would like to do is make a motion that we go into executive session within the next two weeks to discuss Town Administrator's performance, and more specifically, reset expectations, because frankly, you know, my frustration is mounting, and I think it's the, it's the vehicle by which the state statute allows us to talk about these types of things. I think it's the place and where it belongs, and I think in fairness, Town Administrator has rights, and I think we ought to honor those rights. So that would be my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, that not being on the agenda and dealing with the nature that it is, I'm going to rule that motion out of order and request an opinion from Town Council before our next meeting. The only thing before us on the agenda is this particular issue with the Assistant Zoning Enforcement Officer. Nothing on here, there's no notice given in terms of anything about the Town Administrator's job. So if anything wants to be related to the four corners of what's on the agenda, I'll entertain it.
I can, I can bring it up under old business and ask that we put it on the next agenda. That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Now with the?
So you have my frustration and my concern. I don't have any, any problem with the reduced job description of the Assistant Zoning Enforcement Officer. I don't think it sets that person up for failure. We hired something different than what we originally posted, but I still do not want to set up that person for failure. I think that the job description and the, and the reduction of work responsibilities does that. So I'm in, I'm in favor of changing the job description. I am not in favor at this point of, after just posting the position, the person accepting the job, increasing the salary at this point.
Okay, let me turn it over to Will for comment.
Well, I guess I'm gonna have some things to say about this as a, as the next, the next one as well. I kind of look at it somewhat, somewhat the same as, as Bill, with, with the caveat being that a few months back, we also talked about a part-time person at the Senior Center becoming full-time, as well as, I know there's talk of someone at the Police Department being part-time. I'd like any type of these types of changes, whether it's the Assistant Zoning Enforcement Officer, the Facilities Director next, or the person at the Senior Center, that position, all to be, you know, presented. We can get to that, how I would like to see them presented, but also I think we need to look at them holistically as we approach the next budget, so we know what it's going to cost. Can we, can we change two salaries? Can we change four salaries? Can we make two people that are part-time, full-time? Is it going to be done in one year? Is it going to be done over two years? So that's where I am, that I agree, getting right back to the Assistant Zoning Enforcement Officer. And I also let, let Rick know today about my feelings about these two positions, that I'm glad the job descriptions were changed, was changed, but I'm not going to support any additional money at this point until we look at all the positions going forward as we start preparing the next budget.
Okay, I thought this was in response, and Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that this was in response to commentary from, from either you or Bill, or maybe both of you, that you felt that this position deserved a higher pay grade than it was at, you know, and I don't know, so, you know, that, that was.
That's true. That's true.
Okay, all right.
That's what I thought spread this on.
It did.
Okay.
And, and what's true about it, and I want to make sure that people are clear about the timing, my request came before we posted that position and advertised that position. My trouble with this is, we post the position, talk about the lack of qualified candidates that applied. A month into the person being on board, we're talking about increasing the salary, when that salary request and that salary review and the job description was asked before it was posted. was asked before it was posted, before it was advertised. To do it now is frankly, a process that I've not seen ever in my lifetime, and it's actually troubling that we would go about it this way. It's not a professional way to review positions or job descriptions or their salaries, and certainly right after we posted it, it's just wrong in my mind.
Well-
So it was in request, its timing is wrong.
Okay, I thought that was, the request was made after the individual was appointed. You know, as I'm looking back, you know, the town administrator provided us a proposed timeline, a proposed job description, a proposed advertisement, all in October before it went out, and as far as I remember, this board approved that, so I don't know that-
It was not these numbers, though, that we posted. That's my point. It was not the salary that we posted.
No, no, it was the numbers of the 1999 to the 2552.
That we agreed to.
Okay.
That is the salary that was reviewed and determined to be appropriate for the work.
Okay.
Now we're cutting back on the work and increasing the salary after we've posted it and after we've advertised it. I don't get it.
Okay, alright, so it's the increase in the salary that you have issue with at this particular point?
At this time.
Okay.
Given that the salary review wasn't conducted before we posted it.
Okay.
I may, Mr. Chairman-
Yes, absolutely.
Just briefly, and maybe I'm misrecollecting or misrecalling, but I thought when we made the appointment, one of the directions that was given was to relook at the salary, and that's why I did it for this meeting, so perhaps it wasn't clear, but that, I think, is my recollection, and that's why I did it, okay? I can agree with some of your comments, but I can't agree, I was doing as I thought I was directed, so, and I guess I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, yeah.
No, what I can add is, I also asked about the rate, because I didn't want it to be a revolving door, so I've also brought that up. But again, from my point of view, I want this to all be looked at as we move forward, simply out of an act of fairness. I mean, I've already disclosed my biasness for the candidate that got the position, so it's just to me, a matter of fairness, that we have a couple other positions that, quite honestly, we've spoken about at a meeting, and, you know, even at that point, I wish I could have, you know, taken care of that that day, but I think it's just the way I operate, with any of these changes in rate, that we go forward, look at everything that's on the table, and then make a decision, looking at all of that as we go, start going into the next budget season. So that's where I'm coming from.
Okay.
And I think there's probably a point of, you know, communication, where I can only talk about, I guess my experiences from when I was on the school committee, a board of seven, a superintendent, the three of us, the town administrator, the staff, and how, you know, how everything works. I think it's just how things, how even this is presented is just, just a little strange to me. So I think I just have to take a step back and look at all the different things that I would like to see done, knowing that you can't have them all at once, so.
Okay. Alright, so just so we're clear, because that was my memory also, that this pay grade was recommended in response to a request after the position was hired, so that's just where we're at, but we've got two things. We have the job description and we have the pay grade. So from what I understand, is there a motion to approve the job description?
Yes.
Okay, motion made and seconded?
Seconded, yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. And is there a motion to approve the pay grade classification to grade six? No motions?
Not at this time.
Okay, alright, so we'll take no action on that piece, and it can always be held and reviewed at a later time if the board so desires. Okay, alright, so the next item that we have is the facilities director position, and Rick, do you want to walk us through this proposal?
Sure. This would be a new position. It would replace the maintenance supervisor position. Reasoning for the recommendation to the board is, I believe, the duties and responsibilities of this position have dramatically increased. It's not just a maintenance and cleaning type position now. This person has become the point person for renovations, major repairs. This person is meeting with contractors, meeting with engineers, meeting with architects for these type of projects. This position has become instrumental for projects such as some of the ones we've done in the past couple of years, installing new roofs at town hall and at the police station, installing new heaters and windows at town hall, installing new gutters in a snowmelt system. This person oversaw, or this position oversaw, the new boilers and the internal controls that were installed at the police station. The position now supervises at least five junior custodians. We anticipating adding at least one more, maybe a person and a half, depending on what the needs are when the Milford Youth Center officially comes online. Right now, the position oversees a number of buildings, including the town hall, the senior center, the memorial hall, the animal control building, the police station, the youth center, and now has gained some supervision over the Purchase Street School, as we're doing some repairs there, as you know. In addition, the position is responsible for maintaining the downtown decorative streetlights. The position is helping in the preparation of the capital plan. The person in the position is on call 24 hours, often coming out on Sundays, for example, when the tree fell on the senior center. We were on site that day. The major snowstorms from last year was heavily involved in dealing with those issues, so for all of those reasons, I also did some research and checking with other towns that have the position. Some towns have one person doing both town and school. Some towns, as we would be doing here, have separate positions for the facilities director for the school, which you know we now have. This would be a facilities director for town buildings only. The salaries that I saw comparatively were what we would be in our salary, grade three salary position, would range from $60,107 to $73,928 as one moves through the steps. I have attached a job description, our proposed job description. I've kind of highlighted and italicized the changes that we have incorporated into this new job description, to make it a little easier for the board to see, you know, the number of things that we did change. So again, I have done this in consultation with the finance director to see, depending on costs, what we would be involved with. This person also has become, or this position has also become very important in handling all of these buildings, and the police chief is now relying on this position more and more. So for all of those reasons, I would ask the board to consider the new job description and the new salary grade position.
Bill, questions or comments on this?
No, I think this is a good informational memo. I think it articulates the town administrator's position. I'm willing to take this under advisement, and similar to something that selectmen acceded and made reference to, looking at all the positions that are required, increases, changes, modifications, look at them a little more holistically, and see when things are possible and how they're possible in the upcoming couple of years. So, because obviously, as Bill had said earlier, some of the stuff, we're not going to be able to do all at once in the next budget cycle, but there are other people that have been looking for personnel, looking for changes. I'd like to look at all of those under the jurisdiction of the board, kind of more holistically. So I'd be willing to take this under advisement, and the communication is informational for me.
Okay, Will?
Well, I already pretty much said my piece, so I support taking this under advisement as well, and, you know, making a decision hopefully in the future. Again, great employee, does fantastic work. We just have to sit back and look at this from the big picture, so.
Okay, well, just keep in mind that these duties right now, these things that are right, I mean, this is work that's being, that this person's doing right now. This is not hypothetical, this is actual work that this individual is doing, and, you know, really as the head maintenance person, he's doing a wonderful job with all of this, and it's only going to increase with the new building coming online. Okay.
No question.
Hearing no motion, we will move on. Do you have any old business, Bill?
No old business.
Uh, Will?
Excuse me, no old business.
Okay, and a new business? We have an application from the Alliancea Cultural Portuguesa for a one-day license, January 23rd, 2016, at 5:00 PM to 12:00 midnight at the parish hall at St. Mary's for a family and community dinner.
I'd move-
Motion made? Seconded?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Do you have any new business, Bill?
I do. Mr. Chairman, in light of the earlier, earlier motion, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session within the next two weeks, make the appropriate postings to discuss salary, I'm sorry, performance and setting expectations for the town administrator.
A motion to go into executive session in the next two weeks?
It's the appropriate notification, appropriate notice within the state statute would allow you to confer with anybody that you see fit, and also make the appropriate meeting notice.
Okay, I'm not sure that that's in compliance with the statute, but I don't have that in front of me, but is there a second on the motion?
Can I second if a discussion?
Okay, discussion?
I think if even one of us on the board has some concerns that they want to talk to, talk about, and if executive session ends up being that right tool, I think we should do that. We certainly don't have to agree once we're in executive session, or agree on all facets of it. But I think if one, if one of members of this board, and again, I had a similar experience on the school committee, where people felt strongly about something, and it had to do with performance of personnel, then I think it's also the best thing for that employee to, as well as to go in and have that discussion, and do it in the right environment. If it comes back that that's not the right environment, but I think that at some point, if the board needs to have a conversation altogether, then that should, that should happen. Whether we get told it can't be an executive session, it has to be an open session, then that's fine too. I know for the last nine months that I've been on, Rick and I have had plenty of conversations, but I certainly haven't ever had a conversation with him as the town administrator with my colleagues. So that's why I second that, and that's my piece, that if one of us, whether it was you, Mr. Chairman, or Bill, feel strongly about something, that I think that discussion should take place, regardless of the outcome.
What's the motion again?
I'd like to move that we go into executive session within the next two weeks with the appropriate postings, so that we are able to discuss performance and setting expectations for the town administrator.
Is there a second on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Come in favor?
Two in favor, I'm opposed. Any other new business?
No other new business, Mr. Chairman.
Will, do you have any new business?
Um, yes. Just dealing with the water company and hearing about them having to purchase water from Bellingham. Is there, I know we've received correspondence, obviously, from the water company, but I guess in the near future, do you think we could have Mr. Condry or someone from the water company come in, just so people can see it and hear it, what's going on, you know, just a status update even?
Okay.
I would just, I like that when people at home can hear that and see that directly for themselves.
Okay, we can look to schedule David to come in an upcoming meeting.
Okay, great.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Correspondence, we received an item from National Grid in terms of a double pole update. At this particular time in December, there were 63 double poles in Milford. Since the last report, 18 had been removed, 21 installed. Of the 63 double poles, show the inventory, the team has removed eight additional poles, and they're continuing to work on, so progress continues to be made on the double pole issues. We also received a number of items. We received a news release today from Lieutenant Valvi in terms of the very unfortunate and horrific attack that occurred on Paula Road against Officer Russell Poisant, and we hope that Officer Poisant is doing okay and hopefully recovering from those injuries. We received a monthly status report from our town engineer, and I know we get these every month, and sometimes we, oftentimes, we gloss over these and really don't pay attention, but it is impressive when you look at the scope and the breadth of work that Vaunee Reese is involved with on behalf of the town of Milford. We received correspondence from the Knights of Columbus extending sincere appreciation to the selectman, town administrator Rick Bilani, police chief Tom O'Laughlin, and Milford citizens for the remarkable support of their annual Tootsie Roll Drive, and they were able to exceed the goal of $2,000 that will be used to benefit physically and mentally handicapped youth in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So that's from Brian Blackwell, the coordinator from the Knights of Columbus. We also received a memorandum from the building commissioner in terms of inspections that were done at the Christina property at 269 Main Street about possible complaints of residential living there. We received a memo from town council indicating the initiation of a civil action in the housing court initiated by John Erickson as the building commissioner against J E M Enterprises LLC, Elaine Martin, John S. Martin, for zoning and other violations that exist on Haven Street. And we also received an email with the Weston and Sampson report to the town engineer with the, included the peer review of the Phase II engineering evaluation for the Louisa Lake Dam in Milford. So that being everything, we do not have an executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment on a couple pieces of correspondence as well.
Okay, sure, yep, yep. Sorry.
I had a conversation with Rick on Weston and Sampson review, and now that we've got a, a report that notes the deficiencies in the GZA report, I had a conversation with Rick and asked him, had GZA been paid, number one, because there was a significant amount of deficiencies and differences. GZA report, if people recall, had gone from a preliminary estimate of $125,000 to $600 and somewhat $1,000. The, now with Weston and Sampson's review, we have a second qualified expert saying it's This came without executive summary or recommendation, so what I asked Rick very specifically is, when did we pay GZA for what I would call a deficient report? And then the second piece that I had asked is, okay, now that we have two highly qualified experts in conflict with one another, what's next? What's the recommendation from the town engineer, which I don't have here? The other piece of correspondence that I wanted to bring up was specifically the unfortunate incident that happened with Officer Russell Poisant, and the fact that we're charging an individual, or we're looking for charges of attempted murder on a police officer. I find that significant. Police officers doing nothing but working for this community, working in the line of duty, and being jumped like that is unfortunate. For those people that know Russell, they know he's one of the nicest people you'd ever want to meet, and for those people that haven't met him, they should meet him. I'm a little bit troubled by the correspondence we received today, because it didn't leave me the ability to understand whether he was on life support, or the extent of his injuries, or whether he was still in the hospital. That was troubling. The second piece of it is, that information that we received came out 45 minutes after it went out on social media and was available on Facebook and a host of other things, which got people talking. It was three days after the event. I expect this board to be updated through the town- It was three days after the event, I expect this board to be updated through the town administrator and through the police chief earlier than that, if we've had a police officer injured and we're thinking about these types of charges, and I'd ask that the town administrator put it in a process to make sure we're not hearing about things on social media.
Thank you. Okay, well, I mean, this comes from the police department, doesn't come through the town administrator, I don't know when the chief, you know, issued this or whatever, you know, to be honest with you, I'm more interested in the fact that the chief and his staff might be paying attention to the perpetrator and making sure the charges are done correctly, so that they'll stick, rather than telling me what's going on, because I'm not an essential item in this particular process, so you might have a different thing, but believe me, in the...
Mr. Chairman, you're independently elected, you're entitled to...
You're not an important part of this process, so the notice came out, we will indicate that to the police chief, and during the course of investigation, charging, making sure that the case is put together properly, so that the charges will stick, might have to take now a second, a backseat, so that we get informed.
I think you're missing this point.
But if that's the pleasure of the board, that's what we do.
So social media is also before our notification, is that your position?
I don't know anything about social media.
Oh, alright.
I don't know anything about social media, all I know is, the police department, as far as I can understand, did a great job in apprehending this fellow.
Sure they did.
From what I understand, he's being held for a dangerousness hearing, and I think the department is going to continue to do the great work that they do, and we just hope that Russ recovers from these injuries.
That's right.
But we'll have the communication to the police chief, that, you know, that you were unhappy with the level of communication that you got from him on that.
Well, if I'm the only one, that's fine, Mr. Chairman, if you're not unhappy about it, social media side, newspaper aside, before we get notified, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I don't always want to try to be the great compromiser, because I'm far from that, but we got notified, I already knew about it, because I do conduct social media, and I do follow the Milford Police Department, one, because I'm in government, and two, a lot of them are my friends, and I want to know what happened, so I personally, maybe out of the three of us, I knew about this, because it came up on my Facebook about an hour, an hour before we were notified, so it wasn't a state secret, it wasn't anything like that, so it just...
An hour before?
Yeah.
We're talking about an hour?
I'm just...
We're talking about an hour?
What I'm doing is, you two...
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay, alright.
Because to be, to sit here sometimes and listen to you two bicker back and forth to say heads, I'm going to say tails, I'd rather just say, yup, there was a difference, we can be notified, Rick may have been busy, he may have been, when he got back to his desk, sent the email, whatever the reason is, I don't mind one Selectman asking to be notified as soon as the press release goes out, because if it does, we would all be notified at the same time, along with the general public, not before, along, just like I was. I wasn't notified on Facebook, because I'm a Selectman, I was notified on Facebook, because I'm a member of the public that follows them, so I think that, you know, we don't always just have to be on opposite sides for the sake of being on opposite sides, we, it's a legitimate issue, our phones rang prior to getting notified, and there might be a reason for that, I'm not piling on here, just saying, it's a fact, so we either deal with it, or we don't care.
Great. Okay, so we'll notify the police chief that notice has to get to us quicker than that, and then, you know, in terms of the peer review, you know, actually, I think when you look at it closer, you know, I think it's a little bit more, it's not so much that it's contradictory, but, you know, some of the interpretations in terms of maintenance, vegetation control, were just looked at differently, you know, I think that this peer review looks at it more as a maintenance that can be done over a period of time, as opposed to an urgent repair that needs to be done, and from what I understand, one of the reasons that it was able to go to that level was because of the recommendations from GZA in terms of the removal of trees and other vegetation, so that's kind of where we're at, but I'm sure that the town engineer will give us a full recommendation as to how to proceed forward on that, along with the highway surveyor. Okay, is there any items that you have under correspondence?
Nope.
All set?
I'm good.
Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
There's a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded?
Seconded.
Alright, all in favor, any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you and good evening.